I call this meeting to order the City Commission, Rio Grande City, Wednesday, February the 20th, 2019, approximately 6:06 PM, here in Commission Chambers, City Hall 5332 East US Highway 3, Suite A. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Flores.
Father.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide this council as we make decisions for this city. We ask that you bless this city and its residents. We ask that you take care of our police officers, our emergency personnel, and our soldiers in arms. In Jesus Christ I pray, amen.
Amen.
Good allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas side, the majority is truly Texas, one nation, not one individual.
So we'll have item 1B, roll call and finding a forum. Ms. Peña?
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Potem Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a forum, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, item 1C, departmental reports. Capetis?
We got volunteers? Ms. Guillen, you look like you're hitting.
Whoever smiles first.
That's gonna be me, because we come with good news.
Fantastic.
And I cannot take any credit for it, so I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Nancy Pettis to give you a report from the Main Street.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Well, we received good news from the state today, and Ruben City, the Main Street program, is nationally accredited again this year. They're gonna be sending us the certification in about two weeks or so, so when that happens, we'll bring it up to present to you, and we'll have some cake and punch that day as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Once again. Once again, to be nationally recognized is kudos to everybody in the departments that are certainly working together to make that happen, and everyone else, obviously, that makes those efforts worthwhile. So, cannot say that enough about being nationally recognized. So again, thank you and congratulations once again.
I'd like to ask Mr. Cruz and see if he can give us an update since he's...
What do we have?
We'll let the rookie go first.
See, I like that effort. Hey, let's go, way to go here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. First off, let me just say that this city has such awesome, awesome, genuine people here. I've tried to spend every day going to different places to eat lunch, and everywhere I go, there's just great people, awesome environment, very welcoming here. So, I love it, I love it so far. What Cynthia has just passed out is an update of everything that we've had going on these last four or five weeks that have been working with the Public Utilities Department. I asked her to stay behind because I really want to acknowledge her and Mr. Bassan for all the hard work that they've done. Some of the stuff I'm gonna go over, it may seem like I did this, but it was all literally, they've had everything pretty much done. So I really want to commend her for the work that she's done. I kinda say she's the boss, I'm just here to support her.
Way to go.
She probably doesn't want the praise. She seems like the type that's just very quiet, but I think she deserves it, so I really want to take time to acknowledge her on that. TCQ violations, the big elephant in the room here. A packet was submitted to TCQ on 2/6/19 identifying 10 items that the city has immediately addressed. This is the 2017 agreed order. There was 15 items addressed on that agreed order. 10 of those have already been addressed. Like I said, I didn't do any of that. That was Mr. Bassan and Cynthia that already had a lot of that information together. It was just a matter of compiling it, making it look nice, and sending a letter out to TCQ. If you go through what the packet that she just sent you, that letter is actually identified in there, what we sent them out, identifying some of those things. And they were very minimal things, some of them. Some of them things that took a little bit of time to put together, but they did all the work, and it was just a matter of getting together as a team and putting it together, finalizing it. Obviously, there's also a letter in there from our engineer, Rio Delta Engineering, Mr. Gerda, identifying the lift station projects that are being constructed and that are identified in that 2017 agreed order that are under violations right now. I think there's three of them that are identified in there. So, we're just letting TCQ know we're in the process of getting these lift stations upgraded, getting them up to code. But we did send them all the letter and documentation from our engineers, letting them know that we're in the process of getting that done. So, they are very happy to have received that. As a matter of fact, I just got confirmation yesterday. They received all that information. They were very happy to see all the information that they had, and so they're just gonna digest it and kinda get back with me next week, hopefully. We are currently doing assessment on all 12 lift stations and to see what upgrades need to be made, and if there are any upgrades needed, what the costs are associated with those. So there's 12 lift stations. Mr. Bassan just turned it to me today, all the lift stations, what are needed. If it's running on one pump, we want to find out what it's gonna cost us to get it going on two pumps. We're trying to bring everything up to code so that we don't ever have to run into situation again. So, we're working on that right now as we speak. An assessment is also being made on the expansion and improvements that need to be made on the wastewater facility and to bring it up to code and increase the capacity as well, too. So, a lot of things are going on right now, and I know it seems like we're all over the place, but we're just trying to get everything finalized, get you some concrete numbers so that we can make the tough decisions in a couple of weeks of what directions, obviously, the city wants to go. With the rainwater compliance, a letter was also identified, sent out to TCQ, identifying the city's intent to upgrade tanks, and a draft RFP was sent out to TCQ on 2/14/19. I want to thank Rio Delta Engineer who helped us with that draft. It's obviously just a draft, so we sent that out to them, letting them know that we do have intent to, obviously, improve the facility as well, too. That's really all they requested right now, was just to know that the city is working on fixing those issues. There's nothing saying that you have to fix them. They just want to see that we're working to get to the finish line. So, we sent that letter out to them. We're currently working on a cost estimate to bring water treatment facility back up to automated facility. I know, Mayor, you brought that up last week, so I met with Mr. Bassan, I met with the engineer, and they're currently working getting me a cost estimate. What we need to do is bring up that water treatment plant back up to the automated systems where it originally was. Very beautiful facility, and so we want to get it back to what we originally had it at. So, any questions so far? I know I'm kinda... Personnel evaluations are currently being completed on all employees. We're identifying goals for the department and areas where we want to improve and become more efficient as a whole. We are currently interviewing, this is for the public, we are currently interviewing for two wastewater crewmen positions and a backhoe operator position. So, just want to throw that out there for the community, for the public, if there's any opportunities, we're more than welcome to take those positions. We are ordering new uniforms for all employees. What started out with just the PUD department, we actually got with the Public Works Department, the Parks and Recs Department, and we saw that there was a need for new uniforms, so we're actually getting together all departments and getting to order some of these employees new uniforms. We realized that uniforms hadn't been ordered in a couple of years, and so it's a good morale booster for the employees, and I really want to thank the city, the Commissioners, and Mr. Pettis for putting that together and allowing us the opportunity to be able to do that for all the employees. So, thank you very much for that.
If I may add to the uniforms, I saw some of our crews, especially those that are out there fixing water leaks in very cold conditions inside those pits, you know, fixing water lines. Didn't we have some wetsuits for them?
Yes.
They were received about what?
Each one of the... The other crew have a...
Yeah.
The wetsuits?
They sometimes don't use it because of what they say.
Well, we're equipped with what they need.
Well, they don't wanna use it, that's their choice, but...
Did we also get them waiters? Just a...
So, they have the waiters that are quick thing to put on. It's like they go up to here, which they're not like the wetsuits which are tight to get into, and you really have to go out of your way to put them on. So, they have options.
But, and we'll look at it again, Commissioner, and we'll see if we need to order, or if there's some issues, we'll look at it again and then kinda go from there.
Okay. Yeah.
Or to look at some of the concerns as to why they don't wear them. I mean, I don't know if we need to have something different, or...
Maybe it's not...
I mean, maybe they're just not feasible...
Convenient or something.
Convenient or something.
Yes, sir.
And especially during this time of year, we certainly don't want them to get sick and then putting us in a position to where, of course, they're affected by it. So, let's see what, what are some of the reasons why they don't wear them?
Yes, sir.
And maybe we can address it from that point, too.
I have realized one thing, every employee here is very valuable. When one person's out, you feel it.
Exactly.
So, you're very correct in that matter. I don't know if you've noticed, but our hours of operations here at the front have changed. As of February 1st, our hours of operations are now 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the reason for that was just the convenience to our constituents that we serve. We understand that a lot of people work 8 to 5 jobs, so it's very hard for them to come through that time and come make the payments. So, we opened, extended the hours to make it more convenient for constituents to come in. They can still come through the drive-through, or they can actually come in at 7:00 AM to make those payments. And they still have the option of making it online as well, too. So, nothing's changed, we just added a little bit more time in the day for them to come and make those payments.
Is that like a trial period? Because, you know, I do have a concern on those hours.
Okay.
You know, 7 o'clock, I don't see too many people coming in and giving a payment, but I would really like to see a trial period, you know, because I'm not happy about the 7 o'clock hour.
The first to the 10th is when the most people come in to make those payments, and I'm actually here at that time, and we have about four to six or eight people that come in that time. So, although it may not be a lot, imagine those six people coming at 8 o'clock and then all cramming and bombarding them. But it's something we can look at, Commissioner. We're trying it out right now just to be able to... It's convenience for our constituents. It's not for anything else, we don't...
I'm just, you know, my concern just is, is like, we have to look at our employees also, you know,
Yes, sir.
Because they might have kids that go to school or have something early in the morning, and having them, you know, come in at 7:00 in the morning to be able to get four or five payments, you know, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yes, sir.
Does that apply to all the departments? As far as all the employees in the department? Or are they staggered 8 to 5?
It's actually staggered. It's actually staggered, Commissioner, and to answer your question, it's actually staggered. So, we met with every single employee there. Actually, myself and Cindy actually met with every single employee there, and we haven't staggered. So, we talked to them way in advance, and they knew what the scheduling was. We made it convenient for them and their family situations. So, that was to address your concern.
Yeah, that's basically what I was aiming at, to see if we actually sat down and spoke to them and told them, you know, "Do you have any problems coming in an hour early or something?" You know, because, you know, we need to take care of that.
Actually, they were very excited about the opportunity to come in an hour early and get out an hour early. So, yes, they come in that hour early, but they're actually able to leave and be home an hour earlier. We do have one individual who just started with us, and she's actually the one that stays late to close. We let her know that that was actually the time for that slot. She has no issues with it. She was first, the last one to come in, so she kinda knew that. But yes, we made sure before we made that schedule, we sat down with every employee and kinda let them know and made sure we were working with their life outside of work as well, too.
And I like the idea that we're expanding on the quality of service that we're providing, but like Commissioner said, if there's something that, you know, we try it out for a few months, let's say, and then see how the numbers are. And I'm assuming it's gonna keep increasing as more people know that we're offering that service.
Yeah, and obviously, Commissioner, it's the first month, so it was kind of two weeks' notice or a week's notice. But I think by getting the word out, social media, I know they put it out on social media as well, too. I'm hoping that it works. Like I said, it's more convenience for the constituents, but if for some reason it doesn't work or the council wants another direction?
No, my only opinion on this was that, you know, we should have known about it before it was done.
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't know. That's the only thing that I'm bringing up, but it's fine, I don't have a problem with that. You know, what is good for the good is good for the good, but, you know, I would really just like, you know, I didn't know that you all had gone out, and I'm glad that this happened.
Well, I apologize, that's my fault, I apologize.
That's the only thing that I just wanted to address, you know, that should have been addressed to us before any type of action was taken.
Yes, sir.
And I actually had the same concerns that Mr. Jones has, and I also did not know about the implementation of the new hours. And I know that there's a lot of people who take their children to school between 7:00 and 7:30, so I'm glad that you all discussed that with the employees before you implemented that.
Yeah, there's...
Yeah, don't get me wrong on this, you know, I think it's something different, something nice and everything, but I'm just saying that the process that was taken.
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm saying.
I will assume responsibility for that.
Mr. Cruz, do you have information on how many people come in to pay in person? Or how many people paid by mail? Or the percentages?
I don't have that information in front of me. I actually have it in my office, but I can get that information to you, Commissioner.
I'm just curious, you know, because I know myself, I send my payment through mail, so I don't have to come in person.
I was actually surprised with the amount of people that actually still come in to make their payment actually in person versus online. I would have thought the same.
Or online, right, as well.
I would have thought most people made it online, but a lot of people, the good majority, actually do come...
Do they know?
Not a good majority, but there's a good amount.
Do these individuals know that that service is also offered?
And then maybe that's something we need to do as well, too, is educate the public to let them know you do have this option to still make the payment online as well, too. So, we'll continue to do that. Let them know of the hours of operation, let them know of the different ways that they can make their payment and go about that, so... Oh, just a reminder, Mr. Jose Gonzalez's retirement party is February 21st, which is actually tomorrow at 6:30, so inviting all the Commissioners and obviously all staff to be there for him. I know Ms. Lizette and Ms. Cindy did a fabulous job of putting that together, so I want to thank them for that as well, too.
Is it gonna be a tierrina?
There's some miscellaneous information on there. I left that information, you guys can feel free to go through with that. I don't think it's anything that I need to discuss in public, but if you have any questions?
Well, at this point, it's just continue having that as far as anything related to TCQ to make sure that it's in the forefront and that we're taking care of those, any potential issues or any violations or any of that sort. Especially since we are taking care of it and just following through it and making sure that they are aware that it's been taken care of. So, continue with that plan in mind, which is great.
Mayor, I can't emphasize enough, the staff here, awesome. I can't even say the words, you know, going from the gentlemen outside, the crews outside, the crew leaders, to, you know, your administration inside, all around, just great people. I think it was just a matter of just getting everyone together and getting that information out, and TCQ is very happy right now with the fact that they've received so much information, and they're just kinda digesting it also.
And really, that's all they want, is to make sure that they're aware of what's going on. As long as we make them aware, then they don't have an issue with any of it. So, as long as we keep in contact with them, corresponding with them, we're gonna be fine, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome on board, sir.
Yes, sir.
Celeste?
Mayor, City Commissioners.
Good evening. Two quick things. First, this is Michelle Garza. She's our newest hire. She's a graduate from the South Texas College Academy back in December of 2017. So, she just came aboard this past Wednesday, actually.
Well, welcome on board.
Congratulations.
And it's Ms. Garza, Officer Garza.
Yes.
Would you care to say a few words, Officer Garza? No, I got it. It's all right, dude, you don't want to...
Well, I've been only four days with the city, and it's pretty good. I like it so much. I'm glad that they gave me this opportunity to work patrol because that's what I always wanted in my entire life.
Fantastic.
Welcome on board.
Welcome on board. Stay safe out there, yes, Commissioner.
And just got off the phone a little bit earlier with fleet safety. We should have two 2019 Dodge Chargers in our position Friday. So, and the other two should be done within the next week we can have. So, just to give you guys an update on that.
Take a picture before they get dirty.
Yes, we can take a picture with the newest.
I'd like to break them in, I'm here on Friday.
So, we'll let you guys do it as soon as we have our custody.
Take a picture of the new officer.
Sure.
Yes. Anyone else have a pressing matter from Ms. Norma?
Mr. Cruz, I've got some pressing matter, but I got some exciting news today. We'll get the official notification.
He always brings us exciting news, Ms. Holt.
In a couple of weeks, we'll get the official notification, but we got the 2018 Achievement of Excellence Award again. So, this is two years in a row.
Fantastic. Ms. Holt, yes.
So, hopefully, we will... We get an official, like, seal, and we're hoping to continue to add these to our wall here.
Hardly new online courses coming along.
I'm sorry?
The online program that you instituted.
Oh, it's going very well, yes. So far, it's been received well, and we've got our six laptops from the grant, so we're working on getting some programs with that as well.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Holt.
Thank you, Ms. Holt.
And again, congratulations to all staff and everyone. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Are you sure? It's all wonderful news.
Dr. Perez, how are we coming along with the abandoned houses?
Mr. Milan, I see you. He compiled the report, and this week, we met, earlier this week. He's to go back and identify the report that he has to see how many of these are delinquent in taxes. So then we can compile those two together and give you a recommendation. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Mr. Milan?
Bringing a couple of families from all over the country, should I say. One particularly from Houston, Texas, to try to bring into compliance, to make them realize that we got some high sources that need to be, obviously, be taken care of. And there's gonna be some incentives-wise reference to permitting, and the goal is to make them, you know, try to bring into compliance to demolish what needs to be demolished, and obviously, what can be saved will be saved. But just to make the ton clean.
You don't put it on the back burner?
No. When do you anticipate you'll get the information back from LimeBurger and those?
Yes, that probably next week. Next week. That should be quick. Most of the information is very available. We just need to make sure we have the right parcel number.
Right.
Because sometimes we have, I have one parcel, but it's got 40 people of interest all over the country and the world.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Milan. Next, business and orders, item 2, Consent Agenda. Letter A, Approval of Departmental Travel Request. Letter B, Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings. And Letter C, Approval of Action Taken at the Meeting of the RG CDC Held on January 16th, 2019, and February 12th, 2019. Next time, is there any...
Mayor, there's no objection. I approve that we approve item A, B, and C in Consent Agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items A, B, C under Consent Agenda by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 3, Resolutions. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2019-1 to Authorize the Submission of a Grant Application for Funding Through Operation Stone Garden 2018, U.S. Department of Homeland Security for Grant Period 3119 to 53120. Chief Celeste?
Good evening, again. This grant is our 2018 Operation Stone Garden. We're applying. They've already told us that we're gonna get awarded $324,000 with this grant. $156,000 will be for overtime. $168,000 will be for three fully-equipped Chevy Tahos. Hopefully, 2019, we get it on time. The only thing that this grant will not cover is the dash cams for those three patrol units.
Won't cover what?
Dash cams. So, we would have to purchase that on the side. That's a new rule that Stone Garden implemented. So, that would add to our fleet of the four new chargers that we're gonna get. So, we do need a resolution signed by the Commission to go forward with this grant.
So, we're moving with three Tahos and four chargers.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
We're gonna need garages to keep them.
Now we need garages, right?
Yes.
Hey, great, we have to bring in a continued improvement in the fleet. All right, do we have a...
A move that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 3A by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item 3B, Discussion and Possible Action, Approving Resolution Number 2019-2 for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and Required Matching Funds. Chief Celeste?
This is another grant that we're applying for. We just got awarded this past week the 2019, 2018, 2019 grant. There's a little delay on the governor's side. This grant would be for the 2019, 2020. This would allow us to actually hire an officer to run the interdiction for any, the known drug and human trafficking areas of our city. We've had this grant for about five years, and it's been very successful. So, we are asking for $43,466, which would cover the officer's salary with French benefits and a little bit of travel and training. So, we do need a resolution passed to go forward with this grant.
Is this the same grant that we got last year?
Yes, sir. We just actually got awarded that grant this past week.
Okay.
So, this is, we're just to continue...
To continue with that individual.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion to approve item B.
Second.
Have a sec by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next is item C, 3C, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2019-3 for the Submittal of a Grant Application to the State Homeland Security Program for the Upgrade of Communication Devices. 3C. Chief Perez?
Mayor, good evening, Commissioners.
Hello, Chief.
We're applying for a grant. So, we have some radios in some of the police units and fire units that are actually outdated. Everything has been upgraded to Motorola, and so we have another project that we want to comply with. The PD wants to go through the encryption process. In order to do that, so we have to upgrade those radios because they're absolutely outdated. They don't sell them anymore. So, we're trying to purchase 12 radios. I believe there are several, about seven or eight units for PD and about four units for the fire department, so we're trying to apply for that grant. We need to go through the resolution. It's gonna be about $59,208 for that, so... If we get awarded, then we'll do the process, and then after that, we'll do the encryption project.
Is, who's helping you apply for the grant? Or is there...
We're going through the South Texas Development Council. It's a Homeland Security grant that we apply for from our federal funds.
Perfect. All right. Many...
Make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 3C by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. And keep the grants coming, of course. Item 4, City Managers Report. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action Item four, city manager's report, letter A, discussion and possible action to authorize city staff to draft a request for proposals for the Public Utilities Water Tanks Rehabilitation Project, RFP 19-2. 4A.
Mr. Cruz, you wanna talk about the storage tanks?
Uh, obviously, this is just a RFP to go out for requests for proposals on the water tanks. Uh, we have had conversations with a couple of different firms, but we want, we don't wanna do anything official until we obviously do it the right way.
How many tanks are we looking at?
Well, it just depends. It just depends on the cost of what the city has the capacity to be able to, uh... I know preliminary, some of the numbers we've looked at is there's, we can go with the two that are obviously in violation with TCQ at this time, uh, which is the 1.5 and the Hidalgo, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And, um, it, it varies. We're looking at a payment between uh, seven to maybe eleven thousand. Obviously, I'm negotiating those fees to see where we can, to bring it down as much as possible. Uh, but we don't, I don't wanna proceed any further until we have something official and we have the blessing from the council to be able to pursue that. So, uh, that's what this item is about.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, those are the two tanks that are in violation with TCQ. Obviously, there's more. Um, so the fee goes up. Uh, there's different options and what I plan on doing is once we get this going officially, I plan on bringing all those options to the council so that at that point, you can make a decision on what route you wanna go.
But for sure, we're looking at two, for sure. And then from there, see how, you know, what the assessment is and the cost.
Essentially, the idea is to have a maintenance plan so that we don't get to the point where we are with the Hidalgo and the 1.5 million that we're so far behind that we're in the violation. Well, we wanna do preventive maintenance instead of letting it go so far to where we're in the violation. So if we have a maintenance plan, we should be able to maintain and keep up with it and not be in the violation.
Do we really have a proposal from a company to come and do this type of work?
Yes, we already had discussed it with you guys initially.
We had, we had them come and do a presentation about a year ago.
Yes, sir.
And now this is the RFP process.
Some demonstrations. Are we talking to anybody else other than that?
Well, once we go out for RFP, it's gonna be open to the public.
Open to everyone.
Yeah, and that's, that's what it does, Commissioner. It actually allows us to be able to go, yes, they're, they've come to the table, but it allows us to be able to open it up to make it more competitive, which is an advantage to our, for us as well.
Did, did, do, uh, are we still going after the same, uh, things that were, uh, proposed by the last company? Where they come in, do the rehab?
That is one of the options.
They do the maintain, they maintain it, they inspect it, they...
Yes.
So, so what, like I was talking about earlier, Commissioner, there's two options. There's a ten-year option and there's a five-year option. The five-year option is basically, they come in, they get you up to code with, with TCQ. Um, they maintain it for five years and then after that, they're done. Um, like, like Mr. Perez was saying is, the difference between the ten-year and the five-year is you're spreading that payment out ten years and you ensure that they're maintaining it those ten years. So those tanks that are, yes, they're up, they're in code, they're up to code right now, but who knows what happens five years from now when they need, you know, to get painted or there's maintenance that needs to be done. You're assuring that they're under that protection, that they're gonna be maintained and kept up to code for those ten years. So i- it's really just gonna be decide what, what direction the council wants to go. But I promise to bring all those options to you so that you can make the most educated choice on that.
Okay, very good. Okay, we entertain a motion at this time. Have a motion to approve item 4A by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next is item 4B, presentation of the annual Rio Grande City Police Department Racial Profiling Report. Chief Solis?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, this is, this is the 2018 Racial Profiling Report that we have to submit every year before March 1st. As a requirement, we have to introduce it and present it to our council. Um, this year's report is a lot more thorough, a fuller report compared to years prior to this due to the fact, the changes with the Sandra Bland Act. We did a total of 6,887 traffic stops. Um, eighteen hundred citations were issued. City streets, it was a thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, uh, US Highway, uh, 5,171 stops. Uh, state highways, which are the FM roads, 433, county roads, 36, uh, private, a hundred and eighteen. Uh, so it's just a little breakdown of what we have, uh, what we did last year on our stops. Uh, females to males, uh, females, three thousand three forty-five, uh, males was three thousand five hundred and forty-two.
About half and half.
Yeah, pretty much, almost even.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Alright, do we, more notes of presentation? No action here. Next, item 4C, discussion and possible action to review and approve the street improvement plans and specifications provided by Rio Delta Engineering for the project referenced as the St. Ives Project.
Mr. Guerra, Ms. Perez?
Sir, good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Hi, good evening.
This is the second phase of the St. Ives Project.
Last year, you all approved the creek work. That's already been sent to EDA. They've already responded to the comments and it's basically ready to go out for bids. Uh, this is phase two. This is on the street improvements. It's approximately a thousand five hundred linear feet, thirty-five back to back. It's got underground storm sewers, gonna be lighted sidewalk, landscape. It, uh, and right now, if you see on the plans, it's called Rattler Drive. That's the last, uh...
Will be the last instructions?
Yes.
But that's not the final name, is it?
It's not a final name.
Right.
Not until the time of the plat.
Just a placeholder.
Alright, just a placeholder now.
Right now, um, these plans are ready to go out to EDA for their review and approval comments. Um, and as soon as this gets approved, they'll also be ready to go out for bids. So the project on our behalf, on behalf of the city, is moving along. Uh, just as soon as we get the deed to the property, we'll be able to go out for bids.
The drainage issues were addressed?
Yes, sir. Yes.
We're gonna, but if I like the back with all of this form drainage, are we gonna be?
Underground.
Providing, to handle the drainage for the whole development, uh, the tolling. And what we're trying to do is just get ahead of the game, get the approval from the, from the EDA. But when it comes time to put it out for bid, we're obviously gonna have to do some creek work and some land leveling and clearing work by other people we go in there and, and, and put this out for bid construction. Uh, so we wanna be ready to go on this time. And of course, we'll submit these to the EDA, get their comments and make whatever adjustments to land and whatever required to the plan and into the specifications. So we're always thinking of bringing them both.
This was, we had that discussion about whether we wanted a Cadillac, Cadillac, uh, project or did we want somewhat Volkswagen?
Then this, the last instructions received from the council, that's what we, the plans you're looking at.
It's a nice, uh, nice review.
Hey, don't let Billy hear you say that.
It can be a classic Volkswagen.
That too, right? Alright, so any staff, any other issues regarding this or any?
Oh, we're good to go, Mayor. This, like I say, the city's moving along on this project. Um, my creek work is ready to go out for bids. All we're waiting for is the, uh, property on the creek work. And we all remember the process. First, it's the creek work. They put the fill on the field and they start spreading and compacting and then we move forward with the street.
Okay, we, this time, do we entertain a motion?
I assume so, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
My second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome to keep some of your wine, I think.
No, that's alright. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Next, business and orders, item five, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary and final approval of the re-subdivision of Lot 45 out of Wood Brothers Ranchettes, Unit Number Two subdivision. To Guerra?
Mayor Commissioners, let me start by saying the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended approval of this item. It is a re-subdivision of a ten-acre tract, uh, lot. They're gonna re-subdivide it into two five-acre tracts. It's gonna be for the same use, residential, and we have similar situations in the area. And it has been reviewed by AEC Engineering and recommending approval for the, uh, for the subdivision. So it's a Wood Brothers, uh, Ranchettes.
And planning and zoning approved there, no issue, no?
Recommended approval.
Alright.
I make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item 5A by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next is item 5B, discussion and possible action on request by AEC Engineering for preliminary approval of Los, Los Rancho de la Estrella Phase Three subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, uh, this is again phase three of the Los Rancho de la Estrella subdivision. Uh, it has been recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission under Agenda February the 14th. It is on the area of Santex Road, uh, going towards Salvadex Road, basically connecting them. Uh, it's gonna be served by septic tanks, uh, we've got an eight-inch water line by real water supply. And it has been properly reviewed by engineers.
And again, it was approved by planning and zoning?
Yes, sir. It was approved on February the 14th.
This time, do we entertain a motion?
I assume so.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, business and orders, order is item six, appointments and memberships, letter A, discussion and possible action to appoint members to the Main Street Advisory Board. Item 6A.
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, we have received, uh, we as in the EDC has received the following recommendation, which you will find in your packet, to the Main Street Advisory Board, uh, provided by the Main Street Advisory Board. And if you don't mind, I will read the letter that was submitted. Esteemed Commissioners, we, the Main Street Advisory Board and Coordinator nominate and recommend the appointment of Theodolfo Ted Rivera to the Main Street Advisory Board. Ted has volunteered his time at various board meetings, committee meetings, and events. He shows initiative and interest in serving our community through working together with the existing Main Street Advisory Board. Ted is a lifelong resident of Rio Grande City. He deeply cares about our community and in particular, our downtown area. Ted has been in management at LFD, a local downtown furniture store, for the past fifteen years. He is familiar with budgets, planning, and public involvement. Ted is committed and willing to attend our monthly meetings, committee meetings, and volunteer in our yearly events. We would be a, uh, he would be a great asset to the board, the city, and our community. We ask that the commission consider and approve Ted for our Main Street Advisory Board. Respectfully, Rosa Gonzalez, Main Street Board President and members of the Main Street Advisory Board. We do have Mr. Ted Rivera with us here today. If you have any questions of him, I'd like to, uh, ask him to come forward and introduce himself.
Mr. Rivera, you're more than welcome to. We're gonna put you on the spot, come here.
Good afternoon and, uh, I'm just trying to help out the city and the Main Street and hopefully you can approve it and so, thanks for letting me be here, so.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, we have a motion at this time.
I make the motion that we approve Mr. Ted Rivera.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion to approve Mr. Rivera, Main Street Advisory Board by Commissioner Garza. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
Welcome, Ted.
We can go ahead and take a picture up here, Mr. Rivera? And again, thank you, Mr. Rivera, for volunteering your time, volunteering the effort because obviously it's, we do appreciate all the boards that we have and volunteers that make the efforts to make our wonderful city great. And we cannot say enough about individuals that are willing to commit the time and effort to make those, uh, those, uh, projects and recognition, like the, the national recognition or, uh, for the Main Street program and so on, so cannot say enough. So thank you, sir, for, for that, appreciate it. Next, business and orders, item seven, contracts and agreements, letter A. Seven, eight, discussion and possible action to approve the lease agreement with Edgar Ivan Aginaga. Four ten, Bistro El Cie for rental premises at four ten East Main Street, Suite A, and four ten East Main Street, Suite B.
Mayor Commissioners, we got Mr. Aginaga in the public. You wanna come up here and tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioner. Uh, just wanna, uh, bring something, uh, else to attract people to downtown. Uh, our, our Main Street is nationally recognized. So why not bring, uh, more food in there as well? Uh, I'm, I've been cooking all over the country, so I'm bringing different cuisine to our Main Street. Other than Mexican food, that will not be on the menu. But we'll be finding pastas and things, so our citizens don't have to travel all the way to other cities. We'll have it here with us. So, uh, hopefully you all do approve and, uh, you all come and join us as well.
Mr. Perez, can you be more specific as far as what items you'll be offering the citizens?
A lot.
And I ask you because I know, I know we've gotten some comments about, uh, we need to offer more healthier options.
Yeah, a lot more healthier options, uh, more, more definitely. Uh, you all know, I previously worked with a doctor. So we'll have meal preps on hand, uh, juices, uh, natural juices as well, uh, from different, uh, other meals that people don't think are, could be as healthy, but we'll have healthy meals and, uh, different, uh, items that we're working on. We're excited to bring to our city, different than what we have in other restaurants. Uh, what we're working on is we're trying, uh, to be different from everybody else and have everybody else be their own, uh, thing. We have a steakhouse. We're gonna let the steakhouse be the steakhouse. We have a pizza place. We're gonna let the pizza place be the pizza place. And we have tacos, but we're gonna let them do tacos and we're gonna do something different, something healthier. Uh, that's the, that's the ending now, uh, you know, uh, people are moving with, uh, with juices, with cleanses, with, uh, meal preps, and we're gonna have that on hand as well.
You're gonna be having meal preps as well?
Yes, we are.
Discounts and, uh...
I don't think so, no, no.
I move that we approve.
Disregard the final comment.
Senior citizen, oh, senior citizen discount?
Senior citizen. Let's clarify, a senior citizen discount. Alright, do we entertain a motion at this time? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Seven, B, discussion and possible action to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Health and Human Services Commission regarding the provision of online community-based application assistance services through the youthtexasbenefits.com website. What's false?
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is something we do every year with the Texas Health and Human Services.
Uh, our citizens are coming to our doors looking for Texas Benefits, food stamps, Medicare, Medicaid, and we're just offering, we are a self-service site, which means we will, uh, offer computers available to them. We have links so it may, to make it easier. But if they need more help beyond this, we have Nuestra Clínica del Valle just down the street, and they will help them fill out the applications. As far as us, we are a self-service site. So they need to bring someone to help them fill out their applications.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Have a motion at this time.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a not, a motion by Commissioner Garza to approve item 7B.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Next, item 7C, Discussion and Possible Action to Propose Non-Renewal or Termination of Professional Services Agreement with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram.
Mayor Commissioners, we had a workshop, uh, to discuss in detail, um, where we were and how we got there with the CPA that's, uh, currently working or worked on our previous year's, uh, audit. And, uh, with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Cantu and see if he'd like to add, uh, maybe more in, information.
Good evening, Mayor. More members?
Good evening.
Uh, yeah, as you all know, we had that workshop, uh, it, it took us 18 months to finalize that 16 audit. Uh, that, that was unsatisfactory. I mean, I, I think, uh, that could have been done, uh, a lot faster, uh, given the situation that we're in. We, we need those audits done. That was, we're working on, two years back, and that's, uh, where we're at right now also. We're at 16, 17. We need to get that one done, then 17, 18. Uh, based on the, on the way that we've worked with them, I, I don't think they're gonna be able to get us, uh, done quickly. Uh, we're on a, on a tight schedule. I think, I believe, we, we need to be in compliance by August 19, have, uh, both 16, 17, and 17, 18 audits done, and I, I don't believe that they are able to get them done. Uh, based on the workshop when, uh, Mr. Moreno came in and, and he told us, uh, the situation and then the facts, uh, that there's no way that they'll get it done, uh...
Well, and Commissioner Flores and Jones, uh, uh, we were with EDA in Austin and with, uh, so many, uh, they told me so many different ways that we must have our audits done, um, by the end of August on all of them in order for us to not be penalized on existing contract, or grants that we have and going forward. So it's like that window of opportunity is closing and we have until the end of August to get it all wrapped up. So we must be currently done with all audits by the end. We don't have a choice.
Okay.
Well, based on the discussion we had at the workshop, uh, Mr. Peters, the mayor, I think I make the, uh, motion to approve, present, terminate the contract.
Okay, we, we have a motion to approve item C, which means terminating the contract by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed. Motion carries. Next, item D, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Authorization to Negotiate an Award Contract for Professional Audit Services with Raúl Hernández and Company, PC.
Mayor Commissioners, again, this is, uh, to have, uh, a Plan B, uh, because of what you just voted on. Um, we've been in contact, or Mr. Cantu has been in contact. He can elaborate, uh, how far he's gotten with Mr. Hernandez. I believe we have a draft contract or ready to go.
Uh, yes, he's presented, uh, some engagement letters for 16, 17, and 17, 18. Uh, not only does he guarantee that he can get us in compliance, but he's also giving us a, a better price, uh, on what we were getting with the previous auditors. Uh, I, I, I do believe, uh, he'll get us in compliance. Uh, he's worked with us before. He did our 14, 15 audit. Uh, I think our books were, mm, pretty much the same, in the same situation they were in 16, 15, 16. And he got that one done in, I believe it was four months. I wasn't here at the time, but I believe he got it done in four months. Uh, I, I, we do have our books, uh, a lot more cleaner. I think he'll be able to audit that one, uh, based on my communication with him. He's, uh, guaranteeing that he can get the first audit done by the end of April. And then, uh, we'll have that time to work on 17, 18. Uh, on our end, we're not ready to give him any stuff for 17, 18 yet, but if he can work on 16, 17 and let us work on 17, 18, I, I do believe we can be ready for him to start, uh, 17, 18 as soon as he gets the 16, 17 done and he'll get us in.
So at this point, you already talked to him. I mean, it, everything looks good to, to move on it?
Not only timetable-wise, but price-wise also.
Okay. Now, as far as from our end, is there anything else that we need to do? Because it is absolutely, as you mentioned, essential. It is imperative that we get this done.
Do we need extra help at all?
Do we need extra? Do we need to work on Saturdays? What do we need to do?
I, I will meet with him. I guess, uh, if this gets approved, I, I would have to sit down with him and see what he's gonna be requesting and I guess from there I'll know if we're gonna need more help or not. There's a lot of work to be done. Uh, if he can work on the other one and let us work on, on, on 17, 18 to bring it current, so we can start on that one afterwards, uh, I do believe we can get it done. But, uh, like I said, if I can talk to him and see what he's gonna need, and if I do see that he's gonna be needing more information, then what I think we can get done, then I'll, I'll go with Mr. Peters and see if we can get some more help. I'll take help or just bring somebody in temporarily or whatever needs to be done.
Right, and so...
We don't have a choice. We have to get it done.
Right, we, we need to get it done, so whatever it is that we need to do, as Commissioner mentioned.
I've been in communication with him. One of the, one of our main concerns is, uh, well, there's a lot of things that weren't being done before in our books. I mean, no, nothing's done wrong. Uh, the previous auditors, they didn't find anything. They just wanted to make sure that the books were, uh, I guess, uh, everything was being done correctly. We were working on, two years passed and we, Mr. Peters and I, we both spoke with him. We told him, if there's some, something's not there, that, uh, we can't, uh, capture that information quickly, just put it as a finding and, and we can move forward. We can do it on 16, 17 and we can fix it, but let's not, uh, spend, uh, so much time on, on working on something that's already been passed. I mean, it's already been done, but they, they, they just wanted to make sure that everything was being done correctly at the time and, and they will move forward unless everything was done. It, it took them a, a couple of months just to work on, on a couple of items, say in, uh, Water Department, Municipal Court. That, pretty much in itself, took them like two or three months to work on.
And bottom line, we don't want to be in the same place come July 30th or 31st, right? So whatever it is that we need to do.
Well, Mr. Cantu and staff have taken corrective steps based on the audit that was just done. They've already been making headway and correcting the entries and keeping them up to date. So for Mr. Hernandez to come in and, and to the, what he has to do now, it's in a lot better shape than we, when he did the last one.
Oh, yeah, in a lot better shape.
When he was last time with us. So we stand a better chance in getting there because of the shape we're in.
And he's already said, I mean, if something's not there, I'm not gonna spend time in, in trying to fix it. I'm just gonna put it as a finding and you can fix it on the following year. I mean, like I said, there's nothing wrong in there. It's just, uh, y- you can't be taking too much time on something that's already passed.
But whatever we need to do to correct it, okay, like you said, get the finding and then correct it for the following year. And I mean, and if it's a finding, it's a finding.
17, 18 is pretty much, everything's clean because the previous auditors told us what we needed to do and we've been working on it. But I mean, 15, 16, 16, 17, it's in the past. We, there's nothing we can do now.
Okay. Okay, do, this time do we entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, uh, business and orders, item 8, Executive Session, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot 071, Consultation with Attorney, Section 551 dot 074, Personnel Matters, and Section 551 dot 087, Economic Development Matters. It is 7:05 PM. Okay, we're back in open session. It's 8:20 PM. It's item 9, We Convene Into Regular Session in Consideration of Action on Matters Discussed During Executive Session, Including the Following. Item 9A, there's no action. 9B, there's no action. Item 9C.
Uh, Mayor, I motion to authorize City Manager to negotiate and enter all necessary documents to hire Victor Canales to provide legal services to the Municipal Court as the RGC Municipal Court Prosecutor.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed. Motion carries. Item 9D, no action. Item 9E, no action, and item 9F, no action. At this time, have a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second set by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. It is 8:21 PM.